This conference will now be recorded.
This is a meeting of the Monterey Finance Committee. Joint meeting with the Select Board, beginning at 6 o'clock. It is being recorded by the Select Board on GoToMeeting app. Because of that, I will not be taking the minutes. The attendees are the Chair and Katrina Fitzpatrick for the Finance Committee. We have, hi Justin. Justin Maycock and Steve Wise are here in person for the Select Board. We've got John Linebold, yeah, on Zoom. And Resident and Frank Upton are also on Zoom. We have Susan Cooper, we have Don Coburn, we have Jeff Zimmerman, and we have Lauren Berman, and we have Peter Lequette and Melissa Nell in the room with us. In keeping with the open meeting law, now when they speak until recognized by the Chair, please state your name. Discussion will be limited to agenda items. In consideration of all participants, please, for more brief and on topic, the Chair will move to adjourn the meeting if necessary. And I brought my secret weapon. All votes will be voice votes as needed. I did want to welcome Lauren Berman and Jeff Zimmerman. Anyone who read the Monterey News recently saw a very excellent article that Lauren shared with us about an experience she had in the dignity workshop. And so I just asked her to come this evening to kind of see us in action because her specialty is mediation. But maybe I should just let you take a minute to say anything that you'd like to say before we get down to the real nitty gritty.
Yeah, I mean, long story short, I work in public resolution as does my husband. We're both mediators and psychologists. I happened, I actually brought the book, so everybody can see one of the books. This is Dr. Dahner hit's book, Our Leading with Dignity. I happened to be in a workshop in December with one of my professional associations to learn skills, and she was leading this workshop. And all I could think about was Monterey.
Well, that's why we asked you to come.
And I just thought, we need this in Monterey because all the investigations in the world aren't going to fix us. So, you know, I just love it here, and I just really want to see us in a much more healthy, civilized, dignified place.
That's great. So I guess you'll see us in action. Our agenda tonight, I will just take it from the top. This is a joint meeting with the Select Board. It's to review the budget line by line and identify items requiring further discussion for the next meeting. In other words, I want to just go down the list of budget items. You can raise your hand or say hold, as we do in the town meetings, so that we can make a notation, that we're going to put it on a list of things to come back to. What I'd like to avoid is getting bogged down on any particular item at this point because I'd like to get to the end of the list, and then we'll see where we're at. Because we also have potential for a cost of living increase discussion, which I'm sure everyone will have some opinion about. And I also want to make sure that we make a list of the general areas for further discussion. Once again, avoiding anything really in depth tonight, but just to see what the lay of the land is and where we can go from here. I know Melissa has met with Justin and I on a preliminary basis to get all of the requests from the various departments and individuals who work for the town. And so we have a starting place with what they've recommended, and the Select Board has already made some moves in deciding what priorities we have. So that being said, I might... Does everybody have, or would anybody like some copies? Melissa, do you have copies right there for people to use? Is this likely to be the same, Melissa?
No.
No, I had all those pictures of the bridge. Black and white. Oh, I put them in my bag. So we've forgotten. If we start right at the top. Melissa, I think you highlighted on the sheet that you just handed out, the first item that might need more discussion from the Select Board's point of view is the grant writing request, and it has decreased. And do, shall we just keep going on that? I think the next one you pointed out might be worthy of more discussion is the administrative assistant salary. Can you get the line out of my business?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, it just makes it easier to find.
Okay, 122 is the first one. 120 is the second one.
Discuss the 122 for the second, the grant writing we did.
Try me.
I don't have, I don't have my own ballot, I gotta bring my own. So it's my understanding that, and we had seen the inspection that we did with Select Board, that we're basing, we're basing it based on how much money's ever actually spent previous year. Is that correct, Melissa?
Money spent the previous year and the fact that zero has been spent this year.
Well, and now I would let everybody know that, you know, this, like, the previous year, budget-wise, may be increased on the floor. Sometimes people are very strongly for funding it to the $10,000 level. However, again, this, this level is based upon the current, you know, the current expenditure for the last two years.
Our experience, yeah.
Right? I didn't fund it, make sense?
Yeah.
Go on, go on.
On the administrative assistant salary, Melissa, do you want to speak to that? Just as an explanation?
That's the new proposed position, so I'm assuming everybody's going to want a little more information about that.
That would be...
20 hours a week for someone to assist with the Parks Commission, the Planning Board, Finance Committee, backup for me, I'm working in the Town Hall, the Billy Inspector, I know I'm missing someone else, but I am working on a job description. I know you asked for that last time.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody's hands raised, so I'm just going to keep going. But I can't see that well, so if I miss somebody, speak up. The next one that had a note next to it was the computer software supplies. We were reducing that one.
No, raising it.
Right, oh, no.
It was 2,000.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm looking at that. That's number 155.
Are we sure that's enough?
Well, all right, so what do you think we need to consider?
I just, I look at these, what we're currently doing technology-wise, and I see a greater need for, to constantly better our technology here in Town Hall. Because right now, I'm looking at a probably gather...
Recording situation?
Recording situation. Now, a lot of this was, exists because of COVID, and we don't think that, hopefully, it's not going to be around anymore.
That's not one.
Well, it's, it's particled, but I have to...
Well, it's enough.
But, but, but I, but you know, I think, you know, in my experience, that we've always been a little climbing wall when it comes to technology. I just, Justin, as somebody, the most, probably the most technologically savvy person in this room, what do you think?
Well, I'm not incredibly familiar with the exact needs of technology in Town Hall, but it is my understanding that we could spend some more proactive money. But maybe that's a question for Tom Roy about exactly how much he, you know, would be appropriate to upgrade some of our systems. And I know various employees within Town Hall have had some computer troubles, which is always going to happen, but I think it'd be good to spend some more money. I don't know the exact number.
Okay, so that's another one that we need to keep an eye on. If we go down to 160, we've got the Town Clerk, wages, and staff. There is definitely a flag on that as the increase that was requested was very substantial, and the clerk's presentation to us was incomplete. We haven't been able to have another meeting with her so far. But this week, I hope to get a list of questions to her so that she can maybe give us the information that we need to make a decision. So that's moving on. The next one is, oh, this is a little more complicated. Maybe this is a good time to talk about the shift in the Police Department, which is going to, what do we say, not actually be a significant increase because of the realignment of the shifts and the filling of the roles. Melissa, do you want to give a summary there? Because I think you wrote the book here.
Well, I prefer you meet with the Chief and the Sergeant. But basically, what's going to happen is the Police Chief is retiring in December. The Sergeant has been being groomed for the position of Police Chief, so we believe that he would take the position in December when the Chief leaves, and the Sergeant position would be eliminated. The current Sergeant would like to hire two full-time officers for better scheduling and more consistency, and also because of new police reform. So those two positions would run from January to July, and then after that would become full year-round positions.
So this, in total, it doesn't look, just off the top of my head, like it's going to be, because of the timing and the restructuring, we're not actually going to be facing a big increase. We're just going to be reorganizing what we have.
Right.
Looks like a decrease.
Well, the only thing to point out, though, is the health insurance policies. And I would go for a number of these positions, the administrative assistant salary as it's designed, the request for Town Clerk, the request for another officer. So that's an increase that's not noted.
So, Don, what would you like to say on?
It was enough, did you finish, Justin?
Yeah.
Well, my question was, if, on January 1st, we start with a new Chief Police, I would assume he would not be getting the same exact salary as the retired Chief.
So I would not assume that because when Sean left, the current Director of Operations was given what Sean left on.
So in other words, you're saying that's something for us to consider, to make sure that the offer that we're making is the offer that we're making. Don, am I understanding any corrections?
Actually, I was wondering if it was covered by, but it is in positions covered by.
But just to get back, I'm sorry. To get back to what Justin was bringing up, and I think it's across the board, is what is the dollar impact of covering these various positions with health insurance or whatever, other benefits? And tax, employment tax liabilities still have...
Line 914, you can see the question.
Yes, and I'm looking at another sheet. This is the impact of the budget, oh, this is the poll-up impact.
So I've not prepared to answer that question, but I've written it down, and I will get it for the next meeting.
Okay, good.
And so to Justin's point, right, the health insurance, is that a $67,000 profit rate increase?
If it's not due to just the police, so I...
No, I understand that.
It still includes the transportation position. I wouldn't go by that number either. And you also have to remember with the health insurance that last year we were given a one-month holiday on our premium, and we are not being given one this year. So we are paying for a full 12 months versus 11 months that we paid last year, so.
Got you. And then, as part-time officers, it looks like the elimination of, was that one person? Or is that two people?
There's no elimination of any people. It's elimination of shifts.
Of shifts. Thank you, directed, I did correct it. So there's a $15,000 left, is less, in part-time.
Melissa?
Yes.
Susan Cooper. Have you gotten, does this include, the numbers for the health, does that include the insured companies projected thing? Or is this just what you're guessing based on past your...
It has an estimate for the increase. I should have the actual within the next two weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Um, next, are we good with that for now? Will be the Fire Department compensation.
And I think the only reason we had that one marked is because we were hoping it was going to go down a little bit, which it has been amended, so I'm not sure if that one still needs to be highlighted.
The one that goes 129,920.
Right.
This is line 220.
Yeah, and if you go to the first, this is one through the fifth page in your packet, there's an explanation of how the Fire Department compensation is calculated.
So approximately, what's the percentage raised between last year and this year?
I think it's a 10% overall for the budget because it also includes $5,000 more for maintenance.
Okay, so the compensation part.
Maintenance is building maintenance or...
No, it's maintenance of the...
Carding equipment?
Yes.
Okay, so we're all familiar at this point with this proposed expansion of coverage and compensation based on this sheet. And this is another question. We'll go down to line 433, which is the transportation part-time employee wages. And we are currently debating the merits of a more comprehensive full-time position rather than some of the strategies we've used in the past, such as people doing the library, or people doing the Town Hall, people doing checks. If we can combine it all to one job, is that something that we want to consider? And then once again, there are the dollar considerations on what the health insurance impact would be. So my thinking is that that one is also kind of on hold until we get to a decision point on our overall strategy. So I'm going to turn the page and go down to line 610, and that's library wages. And the request that our, our head librarian, Mark Maycock, has made was a small increase in the wages paid to the people at the library due to the additional duties that they've had to take on due to COVID, which apparently we will have to continue to behave in that way, certainly in the library and other public spaces. So I think when we get down to our final budgets, how we do agree that that's a good point.
Yeah, we should, well, we have this discussion also in light of we're discussing for the wages, for the...
Overall, yeah.
For the overall wages. Could I, can I point out something that, is this an error, Melissa? 699, called for council, zero?
Yes, because they have to be a special article now.
Oh, now it's got to be a special article? So we're going to be eliminating that line, that line from now on?
Correct.
If we go down to 700, that's the principal payment we want to make on the library money. If I got that right?
Yes, that's the payment that I believe Mickey is requesting so that we can get pay additional on the principal.
Do we get a recommendation from the bankers? Because I thought we were going to ask, we were going to ask them for a recommendation.
Okay, well...
Did you, for a third? Well, I can't anywhere.
Sign language, please.
You need a lie.
Don, what can we do for you?
Well, since it's budget, I'd like to raise.
From zero to zero.
A thought just struck me on the library money. And it's just a thought, it's not a position mine. Interest rates are going up. We had the, and I'd like you to continue before. We had a fluke that ended up with our not using $145,000. I appreciate that. And I'm just asking, maybe we think about using a substantial portion of that to reduce the library loan.
To reduce the principal?
Yeah, yeah, just a question.
Well, it's something that we can talk about in our...
I think it's a very good point, Don. I think there's a lot of uses that we, that we, I think we have for that, for that free cash. And I think there's certainly, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, there's certainly a place to use some of that possible... Certainly not against it. I do want to get some special recommendations.
Well, everyone's going to be clamoring for some of that free cash, right?
Well, when we get to the...
So if we go down to miscellaneous expenses, and we look at the total of special articles free cash used, which is detailed in the next page, where we have, at this point, we have the different stabilization funds. We've got the Bridges, Roads, and Culverts, which we seem to be inclined to fund annually, although apparently not last year for the Fire Department.
And there's zero in the account of the Fire Department?
For the Fire Department? There's only 15 because we've only had it for, this will be the third year, and one year you funded it, and one year you didn't.
Really? Does everybody know due purpose, what they've put in place? Actually, I don't think I was on the board when it was put in place, or Don's responsibility. But no, it's, it's a decent idea because the idea is that fire trucks, fire trucks are now past the three-quarter of a million dollar mark, probably closer to a million dollars for the next fire truck. And so the idea is to throw away some funds to try and offset some of the costs so that it's not a big hit when we actually have to get that vehicle.
Well, I think one thing that we probably want to discuss is, in theory, that's a good idea, in the same way that paying down our principles is a good idea. But I think I personally need to look at it a little more and consider, you know, over how many years accumulating this particular amount is going to add up to how much, which, you know, if it's $30,000 or $40,000 on a million-dollar fire truck, it's like, why, why did we do that? So just think, think it through a little long-term.
And it doesn't have to be used for just fire trucks. Anything, like, it could be the air packs, it could be hoses. You know, those things don't run in the three-quarter of a million dollar range.
That's...
Yeah.
Let's clean that up.
And smaller, smaller equipment as well.
And the Bridges, Roads, and Culverts was designed to have money set aside for, we knew there's going to be a lot of failing culverts coming up, and additional monies for the roads, and I think we still have a few bridges that may need...
Well, I guess, you know, in theory, once again, in theory, yes, we all think that's a good way to operate, but in fact, let's see, you know, what projects we're thinking of, and what kind of a dent, or not, is that actually going to make. You know, maybe we want to really be funding it at a higher level, is what I'm saying. You know, maybe we should be putting $50,000 for a fire truck or a road in Ridge Stabilization. I don't know, I'm just saying, $15,000 is kind of a drop in the ocean.
Yeah, yeah, we're kind of, yeah, we're kind of like, it's like a toe to water.
Yeah, are we committed to this or not?
Right. We have to, right, we have to decide to jump in or not. I have, and it's, it's an odd thing because we put together and it's got some good ideas, there's some good idea behind it. But, right, how much money do you want to put to sleep essentially? We already have one of the most robust stabilization funds, general stabilization funds of any of the, of the current town. And that's due to a policy which I'm perfect, which I support, and where we try to keep at least half a million dollars in regular general stabilization. So if we have that, you know, what else would we necessarily need to do? So yeah, just to compare further discussion.
Okay, that's good.
On the...
Yes, sir.
I think one thing to take into account too is the relatively short time to pay off on the fire truck in comparison to the library. So the longer the loan is likely to be, I think it...
The more debt that there is to taking certain assets. Well, once again, this is exactly the kind of thing that I was thinking while list raising, is reveal our, what tough questions are we going to have to answer in terms of our priorities. Ready to do the work. Let's see now, no foil control, oh, well, did I do fire company capital improvement expenses? That's a different category, but related to saving up for Fire Department expenses. So it's all part of that general discussion about our approach to funding. Can I move on to the no-foil control? I see Don is laughing, but...
Well, actually, before we get into the...
Did I miss something?
Into the weeds.
I'm writing that, that is a quote.
Yes, to the, before you do that, I just want to mention above it, ambulance services. So the, Son of Bercher is making a request... However, um, we need to pay, to pay that request through, uh, the, uh, ARCA, which is American.
Recovery and.
Recovery plan.
Right, so, um, so therefore some relief which, if there are money to do it to the annuals, although ARCA is not, so that's a good.
What is, what is the amount of ARCA money that is, oh, fascinating all of us here? How much are we entitled to?
I don't have the exact figure I saw on my head, but I think it's a 276,000.
Oh, wow.
That we have until 2020.
Even till 2024, so it's like.
Okay, let's find Berchley.
Yeah. Which.
And it actually can be used for that.
Yes. We're not satisfied, so we're not going to do that.
Um, okay, there's our cultural council request, by the way, that we were talking about.
Yeah, third.
Um, into the weeds, says Steve. We did. We did fund it last year? We did not fund it last year.
Did.
We did. And we want to fund, and it went towards leave removal.
Diver, assisted suction harvesting.
Yes.
Suction harvesting.
Contracted. Contracted. And that's a bid every year contracted and generally it's been the same amount every year because they actually just, they work backwards. You know, yeah. A certain amount.
They started to be some, they go elsewhere from there.
No, no, I mean, when it worked backwards, I mean, they, if you give 30,000 dollars, they do 30,000 dollars worth of work. They could do, you know, a million dollars worth of work. But they'll do as much work as, 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 as the funding is. So, um, and this is, um, uh, and, and so they usually determine, they have a lay scientist who comes in and determines where the, where where, where, where to do the patchwork, where to, where to go after the milk oil. It is not under, their decision is completely independent of this town. They keep whatever they recommend, it's, it happens. And then they, and then they concentrate on those particular patches.
I do all that.
Yep.
Um, let's see. The breathing apparatus. I, it's only.
It's off.
It's off. Because we took care of it at town meeting. The copier is.
For town hall here?
Right, and it's the one that we did not, uh, do a reserve transfer for previously. Cameras for outside town hall, I guess I'm going to argue with that. Um, lower the tax rate.
And that's just a placeholder that I put in there.
What, the cameras? What, reduce the tax rate?
Right, so currently if you, if everything that's in the special articles right now is paid for with free cap, free cash and you used 300,000 to lower the tax rate, we would still have, um, 35,000 to be for in free cash.
Which is pretty small compared to.
We typically leave about 25 to 30 every year.
Oh, that's right, and we have this excess because of various.
Right.
Those adjustments.
And, and what? What is the, you know, the you know, the amount that, that, the 300,000 dollar, how have you lowered the tax rate? I mean, I know it's.
So I can't give you an exact number, but right now the rough numbers with these projections, um, it would lower the tax rate by 13 cents. The current budget as proposed.
Do you have this one?
I do. I just want to read Melissa here. And I know it's real. Oh, there it is. Yep, here.
Okay, well, um.
So the only other, um, special article that wasn't on there when we originally all met is the community center. They've requested to put an additional 7,000 dollars in for the lighting. I have told them that I think it's premature because we haven't even put the RFP out yet, so we don't know what kind of bids we're going to get on the lighting, um, but they are insisting to me with both boards to ask to put this on the warrant.
Okay, well, I think that brings us to the end of these sheets.
No.
No, I'm sorry, Don, what?
One question. Uh, highway 550.
Highway 550, oh, that's not. Yeah.
I think we should consider the possibility of borrowing, of the short-term borrowing on that. See, was it something that you use over a period of years?
Okay. Well, we'll have to do the numbers on that as well, right? Because if we borrow it for, what, five years, what's it going to cost?
There's no factor.
Yeah, that's all, but he hasn't at this point, so we have to ask for that information, right? You're on it.
Yeah, I will be on it, yes.
Ask and it shall be done.
And as you can see, there are money that are, that are, oh, I see there are money that are for a side for elect five voting.
Yes. I, I, you know, until you guys discuss it, those are all things that you're going to need to.
So we really need to black that one out too for discussion. So, um, since we haven't discussed it before, so this is to invest in new systems?
Yes.
And will we not use our block, our little box anymore?
This would be for a town meeting.
Okay. So I don't think we should ever get rid of the box.
Oh, no, 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 box, the box.
Box stays.
Box stays. There you go.
It's checked. Not like the tree.
No, the tree stays from the box, it is. Don't touch either one.
Shared HR manager consulting. How are we going to implement that?
So that would be our portion of the shared HR after the grant runs out.
And just for, I'm sorry, I don't know whether we are in a consortium or a group.
We are with New Marlboro, Great Barrington, Sheffield and West Dockridge. We received a grant for 75,000 dollars to hire a shared HR person.
And we did?
We have not, it's on hold, uh, while everybody finishes their budget season. But depending on when the person's hired, we may need a little extra because 75 won't bring us through a whole year.
Okay, so it won't be 10,000?
No, it's about what it'll be because it, it's for the salary benefits, um, taxes.
So it's in addition to the 75,000 or it's part of the 75,000?
That would be in addition to 75,000.
So each town puts in 10,000 dollars on top of the.
Each town will put in based on how many hours they'll be using it. So that's not a raise for six hours a week. And that could change if we decide we need more or less.
Then the person would come to the, uh, the town on request or do you have office salaries that a person could make an appointment if necessary?
The discussions right now have been that they would be able, their, their main office is going to be in Great Barrington. They would have some flexibility with working remote, but absolutely would come here when we needed to, I heard the towns.
So there would be interviewing or doing.
So the comm, we, all the time administrators are doing the interview on this.
No, I mean, the HR person would do an interview, like of new employees or in onboarding people or not, or.
I'd have to review the job description, but I believe that they would be a part of it.
Yeah, and they would be doing eval, they would be doing evaluation, which is.
Really?
Well, which is where, I just kind of tried to segue here, which is which, once you start doing evaluation, you can do, you can do individual salary decreases or decreases um, as opposed to picking a number.
Right.
And basically, it's, it's very possible.
Yeah, I like that idea.
So. But without it, um, generally the, the way it's been handled is without it, again, an absence of it, you know, we can, you can put a, a number that is.
Arbitrary?
No, no, it's not arbitrary. No, no, we, we.
Sorry.
But, but it, it, it's going to, that it'll apply to just about everybody.
Well, is that kind of a segue into?
Segue into COLA.
Yeah, I knew that was going to happen.
I'm like. I'm like, there's a man over here. Okay, Johnny.
I'm not wearing a shirt, but. Let's see, um. We do have this handy sheet for COLA, right? That's what this is, that's. Melissa has prepared, um. Uh, it's got all of the physicians, the hourly rates. And then what the impact would be of these, of potential increases. I know people have been saying 7% plus, 7.2, 7.9. And last year was it two?
Three and a half.
Three and about.
So, yeah, so that, so of all the past years, generally. So let's correct it if I'm wrong. So generally, most of the years, employees are receiving a 2% raise. However, um, in certain years, um, the, uh, we had it to that, 2%. And, um, well, last year was, was, was 3.5, I guess. The year prior to that, um, was two. So, yeah, last year was the first year in, uh, in a couple of years that we actually.
Biscle year 13 to biscale year 21 was 2% each year.
2%, so that, that's just keep in mind, we were, basically, we were just doing 2%, 2%, 2% whether.
No matter what.
Well, yeah, in, 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 in all contexts. However, um, uh, there was a great deal of feeling last year that, um, and possibly because of, of the challenges that we had, um, that the employees deserve more, um, and, uh, uh, the program was, was one of the, uh, was one of the people that actually suggested it. And, uh, um, and it, and it got passed, so it, it was, um, you know, in retrospect, I think it was, I believe it was, it was reasonable. So, uh, but it's not, you know, it, there's no there's no particular formula that we, that we, we tend to use with it.
Well, I think. Do, do you want, have any comments or thoughts? Justin? You're, you're, you're going to come back to the same thing, which is the impact of the health insurance also is going to, is going to reflect on, in that, in, in additional employee needs, full-time employees are going to impact that too. Well, I was scared off right away about, oh, Susan, you go first.
I, that's okay, I just caught one thing and I wanted to bring it up. The assistant town clerk hourly rate is 1350. I believe the minimum wage in Massachusetts as of January 1st went up to 14.
Yes, the town clerk has been made aware of that. I don't know if she has fixed that or not.
Okay, I mean, you can't pay the town employees below minimum wage, can we?
No, it's been resolved because we signed a, a warrant where there is an additional 75 cents for a few hours that, um, were paid initially at 1350, so it's been resolved. But yeah, in here, it's.
No, I was just saying, that's what's.
I mean, but also, this also shows.
You guys aware of that.
Three library assistants, when there's only two, so I don't.
Oh, okay.
No.
Um, well.
So, well, what?
Uh, I was, what I was going to say was, you know, I was quite scared off by hearing people talk about a 70 point something COLA increase because my feeling is that we should not blow with the wind to that extent. Yes, everybody deserves a raise. Compensation should reflect the work, all of that stuff, but if next year there's no cost of living, does that mean we give them no raise? You know, I think we have to set a, like, okay, this is the rate that we're going to do for each year. And sometimes you win, sometimes you don't win quite as much. You're still going to get a raise, it's just not going to. And the cost of living, you know, this is some magical year. It's not, it's not like the cost of living and the inflation is going to go up every year or like this. So this is an anomaly and I don't think that we should base our decision on an anomaly. I think we should decide what is reasonable for the town and the employees and go, and go from that position. What about that, Don?
The inflation rate is 7%. So anything less than 7% is a reduction in salary. Is what it is in effect. Because salary is, is the money that you need to buy the things that you want. I don't think it's right to reduce the salaries of the employees. Or at very least, we should try to do it to the minimum extent possible. Even in social security, the increase granted, uh, and, and that's for, um, this year, 2022 is 5.9%. The raise that we're talking about, the COLA increase of what will be applying those six months beyond when that social security increases and, uh, ended. So you know, I said this, uh, last time I was on the board, our employees are not using that, so we can do anything we want. Doesn't make it right, uh, to do it. And, uh, so I would strongly urge board to get as close to 7% as they can and to certainly be no less than the 5.9% that social security has recognized is necessary for senior citizens to be able to live close to the same level that they're living at now.
No, I, I hear you, and, um, but I think, you know, it's like when you take a poll and you say, well, all these people want this, but actually, you know, the cost of living, what goes into that? Figuring it out. It's like a, it's an average, it's a standard, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, so you're paying more for gas this week, next week you might not be. You're doing, you know, you're eating meat and it's costing more, well, you know, I, I'm just saying, you can't always say, oh, the cost of living went to 7% because what does that cost of living really mean?
It means that almost everything they're buying is some, close to 7% more.
Well, maybe COLA granola is still the same price it was five years ago. Just, I'm just making light of it. I totally hear what you're saying. Um, I'm just also expressing an opinion that I think Steve actually shares.
Yeah, so I, well, look, I, look, I, I'd love to give in to employees at 7% rates, but, but we are towards the taxpayer's paray and obviously, um, it, it, you know, it's, you know, we're not, we're not here to, also not interested in shipping burden from, you know, uh, to the taxpayer for something that's obviously, uh, going to be short-lived. And, uh, I believe, you know, maybe, uh, on the steep decline by the time we actually enact this, this rate, uh, my, I, I, I I, uh, I credit Don with keeping us uh, thinking, focus on the employee because he's the one who, who brought us to 3.5% when we were when, um, when we were 2%, we were stuck in 2% for many, many years with with a proper, with a proper argument. Uh, and so I think the voice itself. Uh, and so, I think, the employees have stuff, uh, moderation, happy with that. Um, however, um, such a, such a dramatic rise, um, after the force essentially left Barnes, which is not a good idea either. Um, my recommendation, actually, I came in here with my recommendation to keep it at the three point five percent level. However, um, uh, you know what? I, I would be, I certainly would be open to a, to, to four percent. Um, I, I don't know if anything, I, I think if anything more is gonna, is gonna start to, to make an impact on, uh, our, you know, our, our tax, our, our tax rate. And again, once you give it, by the way, once you increase something, it's very hard to, you know, because if money goes down, we don't, we don't, we don't roll things, we don't roll things back, so, but.
I'm just wondering when the last time the cost of living went down is? Because in my entire lifetime, it has never gone down. Right, I've never been less for rent or for car.
That's because you're so young.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sixty, I think I can say I have some perspective on that one. Um, I just wanna say that I, I totally see your point, and I know we have to be respectful of the taxpayers. I tend to speak for everybody, but I, I can tell you that shopping at Big Y, um, the price of food has gone up shockingly in the last year. Like, it's very noticeable. Um, it, you know, I'm paying three fifty at the pump per gallon of gas, and I drive a pretty reasonable car. I get like thirty-five dollars per gallon, it's not electric, but it does pretty good. It's still expensive every time it takes a trip. And we were just talking about housing at the opening of the meeting. Um, I think that, um, to your point, Michelle, about cola and vanilla saying the same, but you're the exception. Um, and.
I was joking.
I know, I know, but, and I, it's a real concern, and we can't just say, oh, well, we're just gonna keep spending more money because the people paying the taxes may not be getting cost of living increases. Right? I mean, on the other hand, some taxpayers are probably getting substantially more than that in their bonus paycheck, but we have to base it on everybody. I'm just saying.
One thing, if you're living, if you're living closer to minimum wage than you are to executive salary, those costs of, the, the real changes in the annual cost of living affect you disproportionately.
Yes, I, I think I understand that. I just wanna, um, circle back because I think, I hate that phrase, I'm sorry. Um, but I just wanted to bring the discussion back to, uh, theoretically and, uh, on many levels, we might feel one way. And, but then I always say, well, let's go back to the numbers. You know, and if we look at the numbers, really, is fifty-three thousand dollars more in taxes a big deal or not a big deal? And that's for a five percent increase across the board for every physician, is, is that correct? So, um. I don't feel like I'm in a position to say one way or the other, what I'm gonna support. I think, just like we said at the outset of the meeting, this is just a chance to find out where we are. Um, do you wanna take that further, Don?
Just wanted to add two other things for you to take into account. This town has no steps in its salary law.
Uh, mm-hmm.
This step, this town has ne- never adopted giving raises for merit. So if you're gonna run a system in which you don't give merit raises and you don't give steps, then I think you have an obligation to, um, be more giving with respect to, uh, the cost of living. And, uh, and as you mentioned, the dollar amount of, for example, five percent, we're not talking about all that much money. Um, and, you know, when I think spending thirty thousand dollars on taking weeds out of the lake and I could go through some other expenditures.
Yeah, no.
And I said to myself, should the employees of this town be paying for this? Or should it, or should the citizen? Now, I think it's.
Well, I appreciate that point, do you want to sit this, Susan?
I just had a, um, a question. Do I understand that earlier tonight, we were talking about, um, the three hundred thousand dollar, it was that number, offset.
Oh, yeah, from the free cash.
On the, from the free cash.
Right, to lower the tax rate.
To lower the tax rate. Um, I'm just wondering if that wasn't three hundred thousand, if we needed eighty to come to the seventy, the seven percent. And instead of a three hundred thousand, it was two twenty, and we did the seven percent. We're not hurting the taxpayers in terms of increasing the tax rate. We're still giving them a little bit of a, a decrease. But we're also, to your point, Don, we're also, um, taking care of the employees in that way. It will be, though, very hard to backtrack.
Right.
Um, I have found that on personal experience. Even giving somebody a bonus one year and then saying the next year, well, we didn't have a good year, so you're not. That doesn't really fly very far.
You have to pretend you had a good year.
Yeah, pretend you had a good year, so. But I, I'm wondering if we have the money in, in this pocket, can we spend it over here?
Well, I, I like, I like that way of thinking also, just, I mean, and that's what this budget is all about, is being, you know, all the pieces, it's a puzzle, bringing them together to the best outcome. Um, so.
If I can just make it.
Yeah.
I don't know where this would fit and whose agenda. And, and this is not a conversation for now. Um, but to your point, Don, about, you know, we don't have a merit system, we don't have steps. Um, I don't know where that would get looked at and who would look at it, but that would strike me as something.
Well, that's, that's why we're trying to get a human resource intro. The only way to do that is, or the appropriate way to do that is to have a human resource professional, um, uh, perform these, perform these, uh, these, this merit pay.
Salary commission?
Oh, salary commission, great.
Um, okay, well, so, uh, yeah. Um. So, so, so hopefully, this, this human resource, which is, again, I think is the more, one of the most important things to moderate to do is to get human resource professionals in here and, for merited reasons, but, but one of them is.
To standardize.
Well, is to have these discussions, where we could have merit pay, but we could have steps, so that it is done professionally by none of us who are not professional human resource people. Um, and therefore, we sat on a salary division, and none of us would have the acumen to make those decisions, but a human resource professional would have a professional understanding, and that would be doing it the correct way. So we're moving in that direction. This five towns collective, uh, was, you know, is, is, the thing about Berkshire County is that it's very difficult to get high-crea-, high-priced professionals for one specific town, right? You could moderate, you can't spend a hundred thousand dollars on, or seven thousand dollars on one, on one H R person. So, the way that it's, the way that they're trying to do it is to try to have this town share. Um, it's a little difficult because there's not, they're still having a problem finding somebody who's willing to work, you know, for the five pounds that they're, at the rate that they're getting. They're, they're getting closer, but it's, um, it's, it's a bit of a challenge. But we are moving, we're moving in that direction. It's just, I wish we would move faster, but there's nothing, there's nothing much of a difference.
What's that?
That's the end of my, uh. End of my, but none of this is in, none of this is set in stone. This is the beginning of a conversation, is what.
I think that, that's what we hoped would be, uh, happening tonight. And so, I think we have, uh, gone through the budget, gone through the special articles, gone through the poll discussion. Um, we were going to list the general areas, uh, for further discussion, so I would propose that the select board and the finance committee, at our next meeting, we might have some, uh, resolution, like come to see your point of view, and be able to vote on our budget to join with our budget for our next meeting.
And we'll have, we'll probably have better, more precise numbers as well.
Exactly, because it's, the twenty-second is the date, so that would be two weeks from tonight. Um. That, uh, we will schedule the next joint meeting.
Really? So you wanna have a meeting on, on, on two, twenty-two, twenty-two?
Why not? In the year twenty, oh, no.
Right, we already, we already tried, it's like we're getting on Groundhog Day, but that.
And that happened again and again and again.
Yeah, and it, it finally ended, so.
Justin, you're off the cloud, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share before we end the meeting?
Um, I think, on the general discussions, we talked about consolidating, or, we talked about the stabilization funds and whether or not, like you said, if we're just dipping our toes in, does it make, does it make sense? Should we decide whether to really put in significant amounts of money? Or I think consolidating or going to just the one general stabilization fund should be a consideration.
Okay.
If we're not, you know, if we're gonna do an amount, a piddly amount that doesn't really get anything, maybe we should just have one general stabilization.
Okay.
On that topic, I didn't know if we, Steve, you mentioned, like, half a million has been a goal before. I didn't know if we had a target for stabilization as a percent, um, or as a fixed number, uh, and if we wanted to agree on a target, um, for that.
So when you say percent, you mean like a percent of the total budget or a percent of the town?
Yeah, probably as a percent of the, of the, uh, of the total budget.
So how much do we have in stabilization right now, the general stabilization?
It's five hundred and forty-two or something.
Five hundred and forty-two thousand. So, yeah, so generally, the, um, uh, lots of, lots of folks out there like to say, how is this supposed to have, you know, five percent, seven percent of their, um, and what, um, when we got, when we got to five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand, um, some, uh, some members of the finance committee made a very good argument that safe. If you can keep it at, if you can keep it at a half a million dollars, you know, if you really, if you try to keep that as a, as a, as an amount, which is approximately ten percent, then that just makes us so much more healthier, um, uh, than, than other towns. Why do we have to gut, you know, why do we have to gut stabilization? So, um, yeah, there are other people that say we have to have a million dollars in stabilization. I mean, I did, no, I wasn't, I wasn't on the word during those times too. Um, or two million dollars in stabilization. I think so far, the town has been able to keep that five hundred thousand as a, as kind of a, as kind of a, kind of a good, a good level. It's more than most towns, but not as much as.
It's unextravagant.
But it doesn't, doesn't put a lot of money into it. So it gives us a good chunk of, you know, a good, good chunk of money that we can, we can sue well about.
Well, is that money in interest-bearing accounts or bonds or whatever?
Yeah, uh, and that's also more money than D O R, and our auditor recommends that we should have.
Right. But in this particular case, I'm gonna be more conservative than, than the auditor. And these are, and this is, this is the Stan Ross doctrine.
And that was, Justin, that was part of the reason why we created the separate ones, because when Stan Ross was on the finance committee, he never wanted to go, he went, he never wanted to go below a million. So in order to get projects completed, the highway asked for their own, and the fire department asked for their own, so that they would know when it came time to buy something or, or do a project, they would have money set aside.
Yeah, but I, I just returned to the same point, are we going to really fund it? Or are we not going to?
Right, well, I think.
And if we're not going to, should we consolidate?
But you can move them back, I'm sorry to the show.
Yes, you can.
Can you move them back?
Yeah, it would require a two-thirds vote to take it out of one and put it into the other.
Well, I think it's one of those moments when you really just need to, um, do, do some more homework and ask you for more information, which you needed. Um, oh, okay, Susan.
I, I just wanted to throw out a potential, just to make things more complicated, a third option, which is, um, if, if you kind of think of the stabilization fund as a kind of rainy day savings fund.
Yeah.
Um, one thought would be to separate sort of operating and capital. So that if you think about the five forty-two K in the regular stabilization fund as a sort of operating stabilization fund, and to have a, a second piece that's a capital stabilization fund, because, you know, if we're talking about fire trucks or fire hoses or, um, F-five-fifty trucks or whatever, so I think in a lot of ways, those feel different, right? And, and maybe they are different. So a, a third option, instead of having thirty line items of individual.
Yeah, we wanted to think of.
Stabilization funds, you have one that, look, this is for capital changes, and we need bridges and roads and equipment, and this is sort of a general stabilization fund for, but other, how many line items on here?
Okay, I just wanna interject that, um, it's seven o'clock, and we've been here for an hour, and, um, someone will recognize you, but I, I, I'm a believer in one-hour meetings.
Okay, don't be rude.
Or else attention deficit disorder sets in.
The hard thing to do is to be direct, to think of the stabilization fund as a savings fund. I think that's the wrong theory. The purpose of the stabilization fund is should some emergency happen, the town has immediate sources on it. So I agree with Justin that there's no point in having a separate fund for fire trucks and a separate fund for culvers.
Yeah.
That, that stuff should be paid either out of tax money, in cash, or borrowed. And the stabilization amount, whatever it is, should be, like, in the good judgment of the two committees who think we need for an emergency, for emergency.
I think I like hearing that, that's a, something I hadn't thought about that one before. Um, unless, um, okay, is, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
And all those in favor would be Justin and.
Well, why don't you make a motion to adjourn? You're part of the meeting, I'll make a second motion.
What, what are you talking?
I don't know, I, I, I'll make the motion to adjourn to.
Okay, so all of the parts of this meeting are adjourned, and we will reconvene in two weeks after our closing.
Do I have a second to, to adjourn our part, Justin?
Justin, we need to.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Those in favor, aye.
Yes. Aye. Aye.
I especially wanna thank, um, the two of you for coming and, uh, and for contributing, which was very helpful also.